That was before. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the regular meeting of the Board of Education for PLSAS on Monday, November 13th. Can you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A roll call tonight, we have all board members in attendance except for Director Velazquez and our superintendent this evening, he is at the National Superintendent Fellowship Program presenting, and I know he wishes he could be here tonight, but Director Edwards is here in his absence. We always start our meetings with open forum in accordance to policy 203. I'll read the rules. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a signup sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names appear on the signup sheet at the time of the meeting as called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes, so 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told that his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handout materials for the board, please submit these items to the executive assistant, Martha Walts. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The board will not review handouts during the public comment period. Board members shall listen carefully, respectfully, to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. We've had a very respectful public forum the last few meetings. I do, I do want to say a few words on behalf of the board, which is the open forum is a safe space for our community members to share their experiences, concerns, and feedback. In this space, we strive to protect First Amendment rights while showing respect for everyone. We'd like to ask the community to be respectful, not only in speaking at open forum, but also in listening. We, as a community, have an opportunity to elevate the conversation and create healthy spaces for dialogue and opposing views. Demonstrating this for and in our community shows how we can all collectively do better. So, thank you for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged, engaged in our PLSAS community. Thank you for listening to me for that long statement. So, we have three public forum speakers tonight. The first is Katie Gabriel, and she's speaking on investment mindset and our teachers.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, Dr. Edwards, and Board Directors. My name is Katie Gabriel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Savage, and I have two students in the district. I want to express gratitude for the efforts that you and others in our district are making to increase transparency. One recent example is the town hall on school finance where Director Fredrickson provided a financial update, including a five-year budget forecast for the district. I know that this transparency is intentional and important work towards building trust within the community. Part of the board's discussion at the last study, study session also focused on budget. The message that I heard from both Director Fredrickson and Dr. Thomas during that conversation is that when it comes to budget, as a district, we need to make some changes, and that the approach that we take needs to be made with an investment mindset. In thinking about the budget, I am appreciative of the work that the board and the teachers' union have undertaken regarding contract negotiations. I recognize that finances are tight in the district, and that you all need to find a balance in a contract that both supports our teachers and is within the district's budget. My hope is that these negotiations are rooted in that investment mindset that you discussed at the last meeting, because we know that investment in our educators and all of our staff is an investment in our students. Investing to help us retain and attract talented, dedicated educators will pay dividends for years to come with students who find joy in learning, are curious, think critically, and are able to identify problems or challenges and work together with others to formulate, assess, and implement solutions. And we all know there is no shortage of problems to be solved in our worlds today. When it comes to supporting our teachers and staff, we, as a community, also need to come forward with an investment mindset, both now and in the future. Right now, we can be showing our support by placing trust in our educators, not tearing them down, as they utilize their own knowledge and expertise to fulfill the mission of our district, which is to educate our students to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of an ever-changing global community, making this an investment that will last for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public forum speaker is Rachel Carlson, speaking on Educational Excellence and Equity Committee.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because I want to thank Mr. Oak and Director Olsted for selecting me to participate on the Educational Excellence and Equity Committee. I've been attending as many meetings and community events as my schedule allows for the past few years, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. I look forward to bringing a different perspective to the committee and for being given the opportunity to be a voice for gifted and talented students and their unique needs. I also want to thank Ms. Fredrickson and Dr. Thomas for the excellent financial town hall last week, and for being willing to answer so many questions. Hopefully, we can continue to have more town halls just like this in our community, as it allows more of the community members to get more involved and engaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see our next public forum speaker is Tariq Islam, speaking on equity. Team needs better representation from community, but overall, good job to PLSAS.
This is my first time speaking here, so, yeah, I'm not going to be as formal, first of all. Thank you. I'm Tariq Islam. I have two daughters in Prior Lake School District. I came here from California about three years back. I lived here before, but this was the best move. We had a good school district in California. This trumps that, right? It's, I love the place here, right? So, first of all, thank you for the teachers. Thank you for the board members, to thank you for the folks who run this district, number one, right? I think you guys are doing a great job. Now that that's done, great job, anyway. So, I applied for the equity committee. You guys are doing fantastic job anyways, but I think what could be done slightly better, if you think about it next time, is in the equity committee, we need more representation from the community as is. And so, I'm a Muslim, again, a minority group here, right? So, it'll be nicer if we, if it's an equity committee, to have folks, not, I'm not saying myself, but anybody else who actually represents that community, to be part of that committee as well, you know, you know, hear it from the horse's mouth rather than, you know, Chinese whispers, right? That's the main thing. Other than that, you know, I'm happy to be here and see how things are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all our speakers and everyone here tonight. Next on our agenda, we need approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? By Director Bullion, can I get a second? Second. By Director Burnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. And next is our consent agenda. So, in our board packet are consent agenda items that are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. I believe tonight, we will look for a motion to approve all the consent agenda, including all items, which are the financials, purchase orders above $25,000, there are none this month, monthly financial report, enrollment report, approval of school board minutes, personnel items, the, yes, the personnel, that's the last item, I believe, no, sorry, 2324 PLSAS organizational chart, and assurance of compliance report. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? By Director Olsted, can I get a second?
Second.
By Director France, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, that passes six-zero. I always say seven-zero, but we're missing Director Velazquez tonight. Before we move on, I'd like to call out two things on the consent agenda that we just approved, and one was the approval of a new PLSAS administrator, and Emily Herman can share that with us.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, member of the boards. Dr. Edwards, I'd like to invite Michael Knutson to come up and introduce himself as the new Assistant Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Emily. Members of the board, thank you so much for having me here. I'm excited to be here at the district. As Emily said, my name is Michael Knutson, and I am really excited to be here, starting as the Assistant Director of Human Resources. Come to the district with 12 years of experience in the public education sector, first as a bilingual first-grade teacher, so I know very well, experience of, of the teachers and the importance of the work that they do, later as a site-based director of operations, and later as a district HR director and senior human resources officer. So, really excited to be here, excited to work hard for our kids, our families, and our staff, and thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Welcome, Michael. We're excited to have you. And secondly, we'd like to call out a district retirement, Lynda Roach, of 33 years of service at the DSC, and Director Fredrickson can speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Lynda Roach. She's been with the district since 1989, which is 33 years. She started as a tech support person, moved over to media support. The majority of her time has been as a child nutrition services admin assistant. She's been an absolutely dedicated employee. She has kept the child nutrition services department running and smoothly as we possibly can, and we just want to thank her for supporting all of our programs and our families in the district, and, and good luck in the next phase of your life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Lynda, for your loyalty to our district and support. Thirty-three years flies by.
Fantastic, yeah.
Next on our agenda is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. We have three. They are all towards the community Halloween party. They come from Prior Lake Lions Club, $1,000, Prior Lake Savage Optimist Club, $1,000, and the Prior Lake VFW, $500. Can I get a motion to accept?
So made.
By Director Bullion, and a second?
Second.
By Director Atkinson, and this is a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Director Atkinson. Okay. No, Velazquez?
Aye.
Director France, Director Burnick?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that passes six-zero. Thank you again for your generous contributions. We are moving on to Laker Pride, our special recognition, recognition for this evening, and includes two things. We'll start with the Laker Educational Foundation in partnership with this ECMC Foundation. Do you want to speak to this, Dan, or Director Edwards?
Yes, I'm ready. Yes, thank you. Recently, the ECMC Foundation awarded a grant in the amount of $10,000 to the Laker Educational Foundation to be used for their Laker Impact Grant. The most recent Laker Impact Grant was for equipment for our tech ed department at Prior Lake High School. Here tonight to be recognized are Stacy Trussoni, representing the ECMC Foundation, Jamie Anderson, representing the Laker Educational Foundation, and Principal John Bezek and tech education teacher Dan Sikowsky from Prior Lake High School. So, if those folks would come forward to be recognized. And it's my understanding that Mr. Sikowsky has some words.
He asked me to share a couple of words about the company, so I'll do that quickly. ECMC Group is a nonprofit that has a mission to help students succeed. I've worked there for six years. This year, I was given the opportunity to direct a grant to a nonprofit of my choosing. We also have a heavy focus on career and technical education and supporting the communities in which we do business. So, my son is a freshman at the high school, so when I saw that the Laker Education Foundation was working toward this specific initiative, it made a very direct connection with both my company and the initiative they're doing, so I was very happy to be able to make that connection.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Laker Educational Foundation, and on behalf of the Laker Educational Foundation, we would like to thank Stacy and the ECMC Foundation for their extremely generous donation to our Laker Impact Program. The Laker Educational Foundation serves to inspire and enrich creativity and innovation and excellence for the students and staff of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Our Laker Impact Program is a very unique opportunity in which we can support a specified program or project for our students that makes a big impact. And so, this year's recipient and designated was the Industrial Technology Department at Prior Lake High School, and Dan Sikowsky was the lead teacher with this department, so I'll let him share a couple of words.
Good evening. My name is Dan Sikowsky, and I'm here on behalf of the Technology Education Department at Prior Lake High School. First, thank you to the Laker Education Foundation and Jamie Anderson for seeing the need, our original proposal outlined, and making it a priority to fund our request. Second, thank you to Stacy Trussoni and the ECMC Group. John Marish, Joe Deutsch, and myself, all current members of the tech ed department, have put in countless hours making updates to the metals lab at the high school. Our original request to the foundation was for a downdraft grinding table, two multi-process welders, and a welding fixturing table, with a total dollar amount at the time of our request being $15,687. Stacy heard about our efforts, the partially funded grant, and through the ECMC Foundation helped complete the funding request. It is a tremendous gift that will allow additional students to learn metalworking processes in a classroom setting with improved safety that is closely aligned to our industry standards. With that, our collective work is far from done. The next action step is to come to our classroom. This is an open and standing invitation to see our space. Come and be present anytime. My strength as a teacher is not in public speaking, so let me show you how awesome our area is. Better yet, interact with the students and see the pride in their learning. Let them show you how exciting learning can be. In return, you are showing these students that they matter. Being present demonstrates their learning is valued by our community. I challenge each and every person here to see education through the lens of a career and technical education classroom. You can't do that, sitting here. Until you have an authentic experience in our learning spaces, you can't truly understand what the additional needs of our program are, or the positive impact such as the funding of this grant is having on student learning. From the students that will get to use these pieces of technology, we deeply appreciate this funding, and collectively anticipate seeing both Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and the community's future commitment to a vibrant career and technical education program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. What a wonderful collective effort from all sorts of different spaces in our community to come together for a much-needed cause. Thank you. And I think a few of us might be in the high school on Friday, so, yeah, we might have to take you up on your offer. Looking for, I'll bring some goggles.
I was just going to say, Mr. Sikowsky will ensure that you have safety goggles available.
Yeah, some on, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sikowsky.
Okay, that, that was great. And then next?
Yep, we have one more. Recognition of some staff, Masmus Award. We have two Prior Lake Savage Area School employees received awards at the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professionals Association Conference, held on October 5th, 2023. Maureen Mullin, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Assistant Director of Operational Services, was awarded the 2023 Lifetime Achievement Award. Paul Haddon, Lead Certified Inside Maintenance Technician for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, was awarded the 2023 Outstanding Contributor Award. And here to introduce the two award recipients is our Director of Operational Services, Jim Delwell.
Good evening. Chair Crosby, School Board, Dr. Edwards. Masmus Award recognition. So, the Minnesota, excuse me, Educational Facilities Management Professionals Association Conference was held on October 5th. Maureen Mullin, Assistant Director of Operational Services, was awarded the 2023 Lifetime Achievement Award. It's a big award. This award is in recognition of Ms. Mullin's outstanding, excuse me, dedication and commitment to educational facilities. Ms. Mullin is former president of Masmus, and currently serves on the educational committee chair of that, of Masmus. Excuse me. Paul Haddon, who could not be here this evening, is a Lead Certified Maintenance Technician for our school district. He was awarded 2023 Outstanding Contributor Award. This is, this award is in recognition of Mr. Haddon's outstanding dedication and commitment to educational facility management. Why, pardon me. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Maureen.
Yes, big achievement. All right. We will move on. We have no unfinished business. We do have new business, is that right? No, sorry. First personnel items, my fault. We are considering and being asked to approve additional staffing for 2324 in our educational support staff, which Director Herman can speak to.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, members of the board, Dr. Edwards. Tonight, we're bringing forward a request for Kids Co-Pare Educator for Before and After-School Care for a Student One-to-One Need. The cost will come out of the O4 fund.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Atkinson, can I get a second? By Director Burnick, any comments or questions for Director Herman? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And we've got Athletic Director Marshall here to talk to us about, first, MSHSL grant applications, of which there are two, I believe, that we're being asked to approve, and then also approval of our co-op agreements, but we'll start with the first.
Perfect. Good evening, Chair Crosby, Board of Directors. First of all, I'm here to ask for approval for two applications to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. These are both grants that we've received previously. They are annual grants that you can apply for. In the past, they've actually been separated, but this year, the foundation put them both together. The first is a grant that helps offset activity fees for students who are, who receive free and reduced lunches, and so it's based off of the numbers from 2022. So, the actual dollar amount is determined based off of those numbers, and again, this comes directly from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. The second one is a, is a Form B, which also comes directly from the foundation. For this one, we asked for a grant for $5,000 to help offset fees for bringing in speakers for leadership skills. That's both for our Laker Leaders Program and our captains and, and activity leaders, as well as coaches and activity advisors, professional development that we bring in as well, too.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? Are we okay doing them together? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the grants for Form A and Form B?
So made.
By Director Bullion, can I get a second?
Second.
By Director France, any questions for Mr. Marshall? Any comments? Okay. Oh? No?
Sorry. Is it okay? The outside speakers, do you have any, oh, sorry. Do you have any in mind? Do you have any lined up? I'd, I'd love to hear more about.
Yep, so we've used, we've been, the Laker Leaders Program's been going for a couple of years, and then we also, again, do a number of different professional development opportunities for our advisors and our coaches. And so, one of the ones is Cinder Campoff. She comes out of Mankato. We've actually used her in the past to work with a lot of our sports teams. So, she's done a lot of work with us. The other one is Craig Hillier out of Lakeville, motivational speaker on leadership. We've used him as well, too. The third one that we've used is Top 20 Training. So, a lot of the Top 20 trainings are going into school districts throughout the state, and part of a branch of that does focus specifically on extracurricular and co-curricular activities.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Have you received these grants in the past?
We have. Yep, yep. So, last year, I would have come twice, because again, in the past, they were separate ones, but this year, the foundation has combined, combined both of them at the same time.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes six-zero. Next.
Yeah, so the next one is approval of three different co-op agreements that we're submitting, and I don't know if we want to do these separately or altogether as well, too. The first is a synchronized swimming cooperative agreement with Shakopee. The second is a boys tennis cooperative agreement with Jordan, and the third is a boys swim and dive cooperative agreement with Jordan as well. And each instance, we would be the host school. We have these programs already. None of these schools actually have them, and so part of it is to be able to help those school districts, be able to get programs up and running, to be able to offer opportunities for their student athletes, with the idea that hopefully eventually, they're able to stand on their own. All three of these programs are non-cut programs for our student athletes, and so we're not taking any opportunities away from our students to be able to participate. In some cases, our numbers are starting to dwindle a little bit, and so it actually does help be able to sustain the programs as well for our student athletes, too. So.
Right. Can I get a motion to approve if everyone's okay with all three?
So made.
Okay. By Director Bullion, can I get a second?
Second.
By Director Atkinson. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, just that I, the collaboration seems wonderful. I wonder how that came about, if the districts came to you and asked of it, since we already had the programs. I think, I think it's fabulous.
So, we already have a cooperative agreement with Jordan for a number of sports, one of those being girls swimming and diving, so the boys swim and dive made a lot of sense since it's already in place for girls swim and dive, and they have a new activities director there, and they've had some interest in the tennis program, and so that's, you know, that's why he reached out there. We've been in talks with, with Shakopee, with synchronized swimming now for a couple of years, because they've had some interest and would like to grow a program down there as well, too. So, you do see a lot of co-ops around the state. A lot of times, they're in smaller schools, but again, given that opportunity for schools to be able to start programs, and again, for us to be able to sustain our programs is important as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other feedback? I have a question.
So, how does the financials with that? First of all, I think it's wonderful, and with more students, open enrolling, cross-district, I think it's great. How does the financials work with a co-op agreement?
Yep, so we charge their, their student athletes to be able to participate. We charge them the same amount as what we would charge for them to be able to participate, but then at the end of the season, we also do sit down and look at the expenses for the entire season, and we actually bill back the schools what the percentage is for the number of students that they have for the team. So, their students are paying the same as our student athletes are, and then the school districts themselves are also billed back for the additional expenses.
Makes sense. Thank you for explaining.
Thank you for that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes six-zero. Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a report this evening. No board action is requested, but it's a report by our Director of Assessment and Improvement, Director Zumbush, and Director of Equity and Inclusion, Director Oak, and it's regarding our world's best workforce. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, members of the board, Dr. Edwards. We are here to give a World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Report. This is something that we give every year per MDE requirements. And just to kind of level set where we're at, this is a report from last year's data. I know we've been over this data a lot, so it's not anything new. It may be packaged slightly differently, but this is something that, per our World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Report to the Minnesota Department of Education, we are required to present this data in a public format and show that we did that. So this is that opportunity to present that. We are not presenting on the actual plan of achievement integration. That happens at a different time. This is just the report out of the data. And we're happy to answer any questions. Just remember that when we're looking at MCAs, we're already looking in rearview mirrors, and this is even further back. So we're talking about last school year, even though we're about to embark on 2024. So to keep a lot of years all in our minds all at once. But World's Best Workforce and Equity and Integration combined a number of years ago, they used to be separate reports, and now we give them together. It asks us that we just give an overview of our students and then a few of our goal, all of the goal areas, and all of those are laid out by the Minnesota Department of Ed. It starts by just giving some demographic information of who our students are here. Again, for last school year compared to the state, you can see some, just some of the differences that we see as compared to our state population overall. These are the World's Best Workforce goals. Again, these are not something that we create. This is something that the Minnesota Department of Education sets. And these are the five goals of World's Best Workforce. The first one has to do with ready for kindergarten, early end, or getting students ready for school. That one's a bit tricky for districts, because we have some limited control over that part. But it is something that we are asked to track and look at over time. Third grade is an important year to show that our students are reading at proficiency. So the second goal is all third graders can read at grade level. The third goal has to do with racial and economic achievement gaps. The fourth has to do with ready for college and career. And then the fifth is related to high school graduation. In terms of our school readiness, this is our FastBridge data showing the fall entrance scores of students who are coming into our district as kindergarteners. Here, you can see that these are the percentage of students at low risk, or the ones that are generally on track for these early skills. This year, we had the highest rates we've seen in quite a while, showing that our incoming class of kindergarteners in 2023 are performing very high. Eighty-five percent are at low risk for early math skills, and then 74% for early reading. And you can see that compared to the previous years, where we see an increase there. So here, on each of these slides, I've articulated what last year's goal was, what our, what the data is, whether we met that goal, and then articulating the goal for next year. So this goal was met. Our goal was that 70% of students would meet that benchmark. And that was higher at 74 for reading. The third grade reading level, again, we've seen this data multiple times in the school board setting our third grade reading data. Last year, we, we were looking to see that increase. We did not meet this goal. So our third grade reading goal was not met for last year. And our goal, again, for next year is to keep that going up. I think, again, if there's questions about how we're addressing any of these, we have a lot of, you know, plans in place on how to work through all these that were not met. For equity, we looked at two, and Sam, or Director Oak, will come up here in a minute and talk about some of the equity pieces as well. But there is a required component on World's Best Workforce. And we looked at our Black, African-American, and Hispanic-Latino populations are the two groups that we've looked at most carefully in terms of our achievement gaps over time and, or opportunity gaps as well. Here, you can see the longitudinal data for Black, African-American, third graders at our district as compared to the state, and then the Hispanic-Latino population. Here, we did not make the Hispanic-Latino goal, but we did make progress in that area. And then the African-American goal was met with that increase that you can see from last year. So again, our goal is to increase it for next year. Here, we have ACT composite scores. This is an indicator of being ready for college and career. We are seeing a decline in the ACT scores overall, and that is pretty consistent with what we're seeing across the nation and at the state of Minnesota. We did administer the ACT. So these are for the graduating classes. It's a little bit confusing. So the graduating class of 2023 are the students that took the ACT in 2022. We have seniors who are graduating this upcoming year, who took the ACT this past spring. And our early data on that, students can continue to take it, but our early data indicates that we're going to be going up in that area moving forward after this year. And then we're also looking over, over time, race, ethnicity, and breaking that down. You can see that we have some discrepancies there, which is very common in a lot of different places. Obviously, we'd like it to be not as common, but here, we can see some of those subgroups and their trends over time. In terms of equity for career and college ready, we're looking for increasing the score in those two subgroups that I talked about. And for both of those goals, the goal is not met. So hoping to continue to see that increase over time. It's a little bit tricky, because those sample sizes are very small when we get down to one grade and one subgroup. So just something to keep in mind there. In terms of college-going rates, we have here Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Over time, class of 2021 is the most recent we have. This data is very lagged, because you basically have to see that a student shows up to college, and it gets reported through the state. So it's kind of hard to, to track this, because it is from so long ago. But here, you can see kind of a zigzag over time on ours, but it looks pretty stable. And then here, another indicator of career and college readiness is students that graduate and go on to enroll in college. And here, you can see where our rate there is about 75% enrolling in college right after graduating from PLSAS. And here, for the class of 2023, we can see that our graduates went all over the country. And here's where they're attending. Eighty-six percent are now attending a two-year, four-year college or university. Another indicator of career and college readiness is developmental education courses. This means that a student goes to post-secondary education and needs to take basically a remedial course. It's called DEVED or developmental education. Here, we did see a slight increase there, so that's something that we're definitely going to be working on addressing there. And another indicator is rigorous course enrollment. We're seeing, we don't have an IB program like some other places in the state. It's not very common throughout our state. But our AP enrollment is pretty high, and our concurrent enrollment, meaning students receiving college credits, is also pretty high compared to the state. And then here, we have our graduation rates. They're pretty consistent and pretty high. We have Prior Lake Savage Area Schools overall, and Prior Lake High School compared to that, the four-year graduation rate, you see a slight difference, because we have an area learning center, alternative learning center where some students go. If they don't, it's not a good fit for them to stay at the high school. And then here, we're looking at four-year graduation rates over time by subgroup. This is also very unstable, I would say, because of the sample size of the different subpopulations. So it's kind of hard to look at longitudinal trends on, on small subgroups. But here, you can see, you know, our Asian white population are, in general, graduating at higher rates than some of our other groups. So that's, you know, important to think of when we're doing our equity work. This kind of summarizes what our goal was for graduation. Again, those same two subgroups. And we met the goal, the state goal is that at least 85% of students in every subgroup graduates within four years. We did make that goal for Black, African-American students, and we were at 83% for Hispanic-Latino. So getting up there for both of those subgroups. And our goal, again, is to get 85 or above per state guidance. And then on that, I will pass it over to Director Oak to talk about equity or achievement and integration.
Thank you. And as Dr. Zumbush stated earlier, much of my report will be the same as well, too. Because mostly, this is reported based on the progress that we wrote and along on the goals in the last Achievement and Integration Grant, which ran fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2023. So first of all, I'll start with our equity work there. And the five areas of equity work is really driven and connected to the goals in Achievement and Integration and World's Best Workforce. And our sites are also asked to have an equity consideration as well when writing their skips, their site continuous improvement plan. So the five areas of equity work are still the same. It's around student voice, community and parent engagement, professional development, policies and procedures, and curriculum and practice. And these areas of work here is aligned to help us meet our goals in achievement and integration. And again, these goals, these six goals here were written in our previous Achievement and Integration Plan. We do have new goals for our plan from '24 to '26 here. But the six goals are laid out here. Goal number one and goal number two looks at improving attendance. One looks at improving attendance for our Native American students. And two looks at improving attendance rate for our free and reduced-price lunch students. And we talk about improving attendance rate. These are improving our unexcused absence rates here. Three looks at increased graduation rates for our Black students. Goal number four looks at increasing opportunities for students on free and reduced-price lunch for MinCaps, enrolling in MinCaps. And five looks at improving student experiences by promoting and supporting student voice. This is our collaborative goal with the Jordan School District and Shakopee School District. This new Achievement and Integration Grant have the Lakeville School District with it as well. And that's for '24 and '26. And goal number six, then, is around professional development and ensuring that staff can respond to students in a culturally and linguistically responsive manner. So here are just some examples of the activities that we've utilized to try to meet our goals here. I'll just speak to some of them. Last year especially, we've increased a lot of opportunities and activities for our native students. In terms of our programming, we have our fourth graders visiting Ho'ou'akata Te. We have a lot of programming in the schools as well, too. Our American Indian Ed Coordinator runs student groups there in the school, focused on cultural learning, such as looking at traditional medicines, sugar bushing. This year even, they went to do some wild riceing as well, too, on the canoe as well. We also increased engagement for our parent groups there. We looked at our top five parent group and held quarterly meetings with them. Our caring and committed conversation activities for students have expanded. We originally started at the high school when our first Achievement and Integration Grant started. Now we've expanded, and we have it at all our elementary school sites and our middle school sites as well. And then I'll just move on to the, the goals. In the area of the six goals, there, we've met all of them except one. We increased Black student graduation, and this is from 2022 data, from 80% in 2021, all the way to 87% in 2022. We've implemented our caring and committed conversation almost district-wide. We have done professional development for all our staff in culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning. We also have two dedicated days as well, to, to professional development focused on equity. During MLK Day, we have our professional development in-service day, where there's a lot of classes offering towards ESL education, student voice, and American Indian Ed. We also work with our Southwest Metro Collaborative to host a summit, Equity Summit, in the summertime in June there, where we have attendance from across our area. And then our MinCaps, we did meet the 6% goal as of last year in terms of students, 6% of our students at MinCaps were on free and reduced-price lunch. And then the exciting, a couple of the exciting parts there. In terms of our American Indian education, in terms of unexcused absences, we went from 6.1 days of average unexcused absences to 0.2 days unexcused absences for the native, our native student population. Unfortunately, we did not meet our goals in free and reduced-price lunch. Unexcused absences went from 3.8, when we originally set the goal in 2021, to 4.4 days of unexcused absences. Oh, any questions for us?
Sam, I have a question. You shared that the the caring and committed conversations started just at the high school, and then they've since gone to elementary and middle schools. What year did that, what year did they start?
We started doing some caring conversations at the elementary, elementary school level my first year here. So that was two years ago. I'm starting my third year here, yeah. So 2021, '22, 21, '21, '22. Probably the spring of 2022 is when we started at the elementary level. I don't know exactly when we started the conversations at the middle school that predated me, but I know the high school conversation existed before I got here.
I think that was one year prior.
Sam, I have some, Sam and Dr. Zumbush, I have some questions about the ACTs. Do we know, I did a little bit of reading on this, do we know how many students take them? Because there are so many colleges and universities now, almost 2,000, I read yesterday, this is from US News and World Report, that they either test optional or test blind. So do we know, I'm not diminishing the importance of those tests. Please know that. I just, how, have we done any research on this with our kids going to college? Which I want to say, too, like, we've got kids that aren't just going to college. They're going into the military. They're going into trade school. They're going right into their career. And I think, from a perspective, I think it's important to keep that in mind. So not all kids have to take the ACT or SAT if they, if they don't wish to. But have we done any looking into that?
Yeah, we administer the ACT on a specific day here for all students. It's not required, per se, but the students that come that day are offered to take it. And we still have a very high participation rate. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But I know that the high school does encourage everyone to take it, regardless of where they're going. Even schools that are test optional or test blind, they still require, a lot of scholarships require ACTs for students to achieve those scholarships. And so the blanket statement, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we encourage every student to take it. We could see a diminished, we could see a diminished taking in terms of students taking it more times. We only provide it once for students their junior year, and it's kind of up to the students and families to take it additional times. We kind of get most of, we get the data from our administration day, but we still have really high participation rate for our ACT day.
And is the data we, we get in this report from junior year just that one time?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
If I, if I might add, some additional conversations that we've been engaged in with the high school team is around the pre-ACT assessment as well, and possibly in the ninth or 10th grade administering that. The benefit of, of that test, the ACT and the pre-ACT, is the comprehensive nature of it, in which it assesses multiple, many content areas, not all content areas necessarily, particularly in our elective areas, but many content areas, which gives us good data around where our students are performing. Whereas, specific, the MCA data is only a snapshot into one. They take the science portion in one. They take the science portion in one grade out of the four, and similar with reading and math. So that's part of our, why that continues to be an important data source for us. And it's nationally normed, obviously, as well. So we continue to look at that and look at our participation rates, but we have been engaged in those conversations about additional pre, called plan, pre-ACT test.
We get much higher, yeah, we get much higher participation rate for the ACT than we do on MCAs. So the school improvement plan at the high school over the last couple of years, I don't have the longitudinal knowledge as well, but the high school has been using that as their school improvement goal because they feel like it's a better measure of student achievement than the MCAs. So that's something that we've really focused on at the high school and that they're committed to, to using as a data point for them.
You said more kids take the ACT than the MCA?
Percentage-wise, yeah.
That says juniors, though, correct?
As juniors, yeah.
Right. Right.
And then for World's Best Workforce, so new legislation passed that we don't have to look at third grade reading anymore? Is that, am I reading into that right?
We, we still do have to look at.
Moving forward, I mean.
We still do have to look at third grade reading, at least in the foreseeable future because of the lagged nature of the World's Best Workforce. So our report, at least for another year, will include it. But with the, the new legislation for the Read Act, we have an additional requirement of having a local education or local reading plan. I don't think it's crystal clear to anybody exactly what that's going to do. But for now, we're moving forward as if we're reporting World's Best Workforce, the same moving forward. But know that we have that additional specific plan that we need to put forward with those metrics for the reading plan through the Read Act.
Okay. One more question. So World's Best Workforce, what does this do for us as a district? Do, we, we obviously set goals, a few we haven't met. What happens from there? What does that mean? And obviously, this goes to the state. It gives us data, figures, you know, statewide, all important. And we have to do it. We're required to do it. What does this, obviously, other than data, what does this provide for us? What, what's the benefit of this? And maybe this is a much broader question, I realize. Maybe that's for another night?
That's a good question. I think that it's reflective of, it's old at this point. I'm not sure how old, but I want to say upwards to ten years. We've been doing World's Best Workforce. It came from statewide kind of strategic planning initiative where we said as a state, these are the key indicators that we want to track over time because they are the most important ones for us to track in order to see success in our state over time. I would say it's a bit out of date. I mean, I don't know if there's plans, you know, with the Read Act moving forward or other pieces, if there's plans to switch it, but I would say it's, it's been in, in place for a long time and it was reflective of a statewide strategic planning process where, you know, we looked at data and we looked at outcomes. And to say these are the main areas we want to focus on is ready for K, reading by third, equity, graduation, career in college readiness. So that was where that came from. I think moving forward, I think we can, I do think that there are still really important indicators and research-backed, so I think they're important to look at. I'm not sure it really gives us much else. And I think we also do a lot of this data reflection in other formats as well, so.
Yeah, and I might add some additional context around it and additional information. Just, I'm drawn to a couple of pages in the presentation that I wanted to emphasize or call out here that as a result of the World's Best Workforce, we share this information. We look at this information, not to say that we wouldn't look at it otherwise, but we bring it forward in a formal reporting sense. For example, and this just came, comes to mind from me fresh off of the Teaching and Learning Advisory, where we're looking at new course offerings that we'll be bringing forward to the board at the next meeting next month, specifically rigorous course enrollment. If you look at that particular tab, for example, PSEO, we are, fewer students comparatively statewide are enrolled in PSEO courses in probably like savagery schools. However, we are ahead in the concurrent enrollment and AP numbers. That, that's a, that's an indicator that as a result of participating in, in our requirement to participate in the World's Best Workforce, we need to look at tho, those types of data sources beyond simply the MCA scores as indicators of what we're doing and how we're doing. And another example along those lines is the developmental education by grad year. We saw a slight dip in that area. We're looking into that and want to know what's behind that. And I think frankly, part of that will be around our, what we talked about again at our Teaching and Learning Advisory around our course sequencing in math specifically at the high school level to make sure that there's a deeper level of understanding on the core areas of Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II specifically. So just a couple of places that I look to that this particular report, while it might not have great value to the point that you might have been making there, it does have value to us in looking at that.
I don't, yeah, I don't want to diminish the value of it. I, data, good. I was just curious. Thank you.
I have a question. And I don't know if it's maybe, well, a couple of questions for Jen and then a couple for Sam. But the first question I have is looking at our four-year graduation rate. So if we look back in two thousand sixteen, our rate of graduation was ninety-six percent. And we look forward to twenty twenty-two and our graduation rate is about the same, about ninety-seven percent. So not a big change. But then when we go back and we look at our proficiency scores from two thousand fifteen and sixteen, our science proficiency score was at seventy-three point five percent. And now we're at forty-nine point seven percent. And then math is seventy-eight point five percent, and we're at fifty-eight point nine percent. And reading, we were at seventy-three point three percent, and now we're at fifty-nine point eight percent. So can you help me understand where the correlation is that our proficiency scores have declined since two thousand fifteen, sixteen, but our graduation rate maintains the same?
I, I do believe at the last board meeting, we went into some of those details about, you know, kind of some of those alignment pieces between the academics and the, and the, I mean, I, I think the answer is there's no single answer to that. I also think there's a lot of nuances to those data in terms of participation rates in our MCA scores, especially at the high school level. But I think it's, you know, we look at, the MCA is a single measure, and I think the graduation rate over time and the college-going rate is steady. So I think we just have to look at that holistic picture, knowing that there are some areas that we would like to take a look at and improve. But overall, a lot of the other indicators are showing a steady, a steady picture.
Have the graduation standards, the rates, have the standards changed? That would make, that would mean meeting requirements for graduation. Have they changed since two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
No, not, they have not, to my knowledge. We have not taken a comprehensive look at our graduation requirements in, over ten years. Under the, when we transitioned to the sixth-period day was the last time that we really took a look at, because we had to, because we were no longer offering the number of course offerings and opportunities for kids to take courses when we transitioned. So that was two thousand eleven, twelve school year, I think, when we implemented that. And that was the last time we took a look at our graduation requirements, per se, that are credit-based. The standards have changed and we have to adjust accordingly to the standards. For example, if there's an increase in a particular course offering that, or a course requirement, we have one coming up here for our incoming ninth-grade class, specifically personal finance, will be in the registration guide for the upcoming school year, that they'll have to take that in their eleventh or twelfth-grade year, find a place in their schedule to do so. But beyond that, we have not taken a look comprehensively at that. And we certainly are, will be engaged in that around some of our upcoming work.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, I think it's just fair to note that the kids that graduated in two thousand sixteen were more proficient in the subjects of science, math, and reading than the students that are graduating currently in those course subjects. And then I have another question for Sam. And, and that kind of ties into the whole increased graduation rates of Black students because, again, the proficiency rates continues to drop for our Black students, but yet we're increasing our rate of graduation. So that kind of ties to that same question. The next question I have, when you said in, increase our free and reduce, reduced lunch students enrolled in MinCaps, you said six percent goal met. How many students is six percent?
I don't have the total number off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Thank you. And then to reduce the absences in free and reduced-price lunch students, where we did not meet our goal, do you have any ideas of what we can do differently, specifically where we can meet our goal or how we're not meeting our goal?
I think this, since this is specifically related to unexcused absences, I want to make sure that the information does get to students and families there and increase that engagement. So if there are a reason for students to be absent, whether it's illness or sports or anything related to that there, that parents are able to reduce the barriers for parents to be able to contact the school and make sure that they get excused where needed.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Can you define proficient? Like, what is it when you're proficient? Does it mean passing failing? Or what is proficiency defined as far as when we're talking about where, you know, one year we're this amount proficient, another year we're another amount? What is proficiency defined? Is it, does it mean a passing grade compared to a failing grade? Or how is that, what is that measurement?
Could you point to me, point me to where you're referring to?
I am, that just came, so I know that when we're talking about years and, you know, whether we have a certain amount of, a certain percentage is proficient in math, let's say in twenty sixteen compared to today, and that, that proficiency rate has been dropping. Can you define what be, a student being proficient means? Is it a, is it a passing or?
If you're, if you're speaking to the MCAs, there's four categories a student can receive on their MCA score. They can receive a do-not-meets, partially-meets, meets, or exceeds. And the way the state reports proficiency levels are the, the combination of the students who meet and exceed in those top two categories. I think it's, it's much, that's the simplest way to define it, is those top two categories versus all the students overall. When you get into students taking the test versus not taking the test and whether they've counted towards our accountability systems. When North Star came in a number of years ago, a lot of those definitions changed on whether a student who didn't take the test was counted as proficient or not proficient. So it's, it's not a really simple, straightforward answer. The standard, the standards and the tests have also changed over time to reflect updated standards. So I'm not, it's, it's, it's much more complicated than that, and I'm not sure if there's, there's never kind of a binary measure of whether a student is proficient or not proficient. It's, it's a lot of different data sources indicating that, but if you're talking specifically in the MCAs, it's those top two categories out of four.
Well, it's something that we measure and we share out, right? The proficiency rates. And so when there's not a clear definition, that, that's, it's hard, right?
Yeah.
For you and for, for the community to understand.
It certainly is. And, and one of the things I wanted to bring to the conversation is obviously why we have a comprehensive look at the data, more than just that one measure of success. And as I, as I was pointing out earlier in this document, there are multiple measures that we measure ourselves against, and both on a state level as well as a national level, to see where we are at with our performance, where we need to focus our attention for that continuous improvement. Again, as Director Zumbush talked about, we, we spoke to this at our study session at the end of October at length around some of those specific things we're working on and will continue to work on as we move forward in the spirit of continuous improvement. So I, I just want to make sure that that point is emphasized once again.
Just referring you back to this third-grade reading slide, it does say the percentage of students scoring in the meets or exceeds category. So just clarifying that that is that combination of those two categories that equals the percentage of students proficient according to the MCAs. So it's those two categories combined.
And I think relating that to that, too, one thing to make note is that we do have an increase in students new to country that are speaking English for the first time. So if they're to take the MCAs right now in English, they're definitely not going to probably score that meets or exceeds base there. So that could be a reason for dropping the percentage as well.
One more thought that popped into my head that is important to point out as well with regard to MCA specifically is they are a measure of our curriculum and are, are working with that curriculum and identifying gaps. They are not intended to be an individualized student result, and that's why we do those other measures such as FastBridge, for example, prior to that NWE map that we utilized as a system. Those are intended to help inform, in addition to the individual teacher understanding through their classroom-based assessments where students are performing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that, because I just received my students' MCAs, just like every other parent did, in the mail, my piece of paper. And that was exactly the question that came to mind, is that you look at it from the state as a number, but knowing that the meets and exceeds would be considered proficient is helpful. So thank you for explaining that.
I had a question here. Sam, when I'm looking at some of these and, and some of these look like they're from FastBridge, and some of them are from MCAs because they actually mention them. Is the FastBridge the most current, current for this year, or is that also from at least a year prior? So like, when we're looking at the fifty-nine percent for the reading score on third grade, was that FastBridge or a year previous MCA? Obviously, not just this past spring, but the, before that.
This is the only data that comes from FastBridge. Everything else is MCAs.
Okay.
Just because kindergartners don't, this is our indicator of where students are coming into our system at.
It's fall.
It's fall of kindergarten, yeah. The data would look different if we were looking at third-grade proficiency, you know, as defined by FastBridge. So again, they're defined differently per different measure. MCA proficiency means something different than FastBridge proficiency. It's, it's kind of, it's a different scale, but, you know, more or less that's, it, it measures it differently and it measures a slightly different thing. To Dan's point, the MCAs are not designed to give individual student feedback. They're systematic or systems-wide trend-level data. We are required to send them home per statute because of student data transparency laws. But really, the FastBridge is the one that gives families and teachers the most accurate, up-to-date information on where that student is academically and in terms of their foundational skills at that moment. So it would look different if we looked at third-grade FastBridge data versus MCAs.
What I was getting at is when I look at the third-grade reading level of fifty-nine percent and it says twenty twenty-three, are those the most, those aren't the most recent MCA scores? Because when you started off here, we're already looking almost a year in arrears? Or is that also this past spring? I'm just trying to understand that.
This is the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. We have MCAs from this past spring, yes. I was, sorry, if I was unclear. I was indicating that we've discussed MCA scores in a couple other board meetings that were also from this past spring. So, yeah, the, the high school data gets complicated because when you look at college-going and course-taking, you're two to three years behind. Graduation rates is even a year or two behind. The, the MCA data is from this past spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify that, because I know we kind of fluctuated with the, with the numbers.
I know. You kind of have to think of five different school years in your mind all at once to understand. Yeah, it's very.
Well, I appreciate it. And I also appreciated the lengthy discussion at the last study session with the improvement plans that started last year. So let's hope that all of our goals are met. And I do appreciate the work that's been put forward and all the new curriculum, the new math curriculum, all that. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will yeah, move to calendar, and that's for approval tonight, correct?
That is correct, yes. So you had in your board packet a proposed calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and it will look very similar to this school year that we're currently in, and I want to. And I want to speak to that just for a moment. But also want to note, important point is that we are bringing this calendar forward a month earlier than we typically do. And the primary reason for that is, so we typically bring a calendar for the upcoming school year in the month of December for approval. We are bringing it forward here in order to open our enrollment ahead of winter break, specifically kindergarten enrollment. And we are moving up our, as we've shared with you, as Executive Director Fredrickson has shared with you, from a budgeting standpoint and a staffing perspective, and Executive Director Herman, we are moving up our timelines for staffing with a goal of having staffing allocations to sites by mid-February at this point. We are still operating with that as our target. And so we have backed up from there what we need to do and what information we need to have at our disposal. And one of the things we need to launch with, one of the first things that we do when we prepare for an upcoming school year is to open up kindergarten enrollment. And so our intention is to, pending your approval tonight, move forward in our plan to get our systems ready to launch our kindergarten enrollment in mid-December with a target kindergarten information night for December 12th, so that we get it on folks' radar before the winter break. And then obviously continue communication throughout the month of January with a goal of having our most accurate enrollment as possible by January, the end of January, so that we can begin our staffing process accordingly. We recognize, obviously, that that is not the end-all, be-all, and families will still make decisions about their incoming potential kindergartner joining our ranks. But that is a reason why we're bringing this forward a month earlier than normal. And likewise, as a result, we are bringing a similar calendar forward. We, including, if you recall last year, when you, when this, not this particular board, but the board in place in December approved our calendar, we had brought forward a recommendation for additional early release days that we truly are seeing as a gift of time. We recognize the disruption potentially that that has caused some families as they plan accordingly. But we have found that we've had two of those early release days to date, with a third one coming up on December 6th. And those monthly early release days have really been vital for a couple of things, one of which is, as we've talked about in putting that out there, giving us an opportunity to have, look at real-time data. We just spent a portion of this conversation, we spent a portion of our, our study session at the end of October talking about this data and how we can be engaged in improvement efforts around it. And having that real-time data to support students on a monthly basis, taking a look at the most recent data we have, whether it be standardized assessments, i.e. FastBridge, or whether it be local assessments within the conclusion of a particular unit, or to bring those systems forward and put in place to support students at a higher level, as well as, as we bring this full circle back to the conversation around what MCA data tells us, which is the value or the strength of our curriculum. If we are adopting or bringing forward new curriculum, we need time to train our teachers on that, train our teachers on instructional strategies, provide those professional development, I'll use the term real-time professional development opportunities. And that's why we are bringing forward a calendar for continuation of that practice that we put in place for this school year, even though we've only had two to date. We've found value in them. We continue to get feedback from our stakeholders, in this case, our, our staff, about how to make that better, best meet their needs. And we continue to tweak each month the iteration of the next early release day as a result of that. And we would continue to do that. There is one note that I wanted to point out in November, specifically because one of the things when we found with early release days is the disruption that it causes for school calendars and for households as well as our staff. We did adjust, rather than take the November to be the first Wednesday in sequence with our others, we aligned it with the end of a quarter. So there's a slight adjustment there where the November date would be in, on a Thursday rather than a Wednesday. Wanted to make note of that because otherwise we would interrupt that day, have class for Thursday, and then have the end of the quarter. So felt that was an adjustment we needed to make. Also different part of this, want to fully acknowledge upfront that we did not engage in a significant feedback loop around the creation of this calendar. We are bringing it forward without that in place. But we do intend in our upcoming strategic planning process, coming out later this spring that we've spoken about here at the board table, that we certainly want to bring feedback around calendar being a topic to gain feedback from our stakeholders and our community through the strategic planning process. So those are a couple of highlights, and certainly will entertain additional questions.
First, can I get a motion to approve?
Who made?
By Director Atkinson, and a second, please?
A second.
By Director Bland, okay.
So I have a question. So based on some feedback that I've heard from surrounding districts, particularly New Prague and Jordan, where their calendar goes Labor Day to Memorial Day. I, I kind of, I took a look at our calendar and tried to understand, and I am not a calendar guru, let me tell you that much. So praise to the people who can figure this all out. But the one thing that stuck out to me is that our calendar has 173 instructional days. Jordan has 169, New Prague has 168 days. So my question is, and some of those, the biggest differences in those days was the Wednesday before MEA. That is a day that New Prague and Jordan would have school so that they could be out before Memorial Day. And then the second one was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. They would have that as an instructional day, and then they would be out before Memorial Day. So this calendar, our calendar, we go through the last week of Memorial Day into the first, really, three weeks, first three days of June. And I go, I know, I know what happens in my family come June 1st. And even after Memorial Day, there's a lot of loss of interest. And so my first question is, can you help me understand why we have more instructional days? And if there's any way to cut that back so we could potentially get to a true Labor Day to Memorial Day schedule? And, yeah, compared to the, our surrounding districts?
Yes, thank you for noting the differences there. Instructional, it boils down to instructional minutes slash hours that we actually have to calculate. So there's a requirement, per hour requirement, and based upon grade level of student, K5 has one instruction, actually, it's K6, has one instructional requirement, and 712. And we, it's based on number of hours. And we have created with a couple of things that come out of our calculation. We have ample opportunity in our elementary because the number of instructional hours is significantly less than it is at the secondary level. So not knowing fully those schedules that you pointed out, what their daily schedule is and how they are calculating their hours, that would be the, where I would see possibly a distinction, as well as inclusive of. So for example, at the high school level, when we have Laker time, we cannot count that as instructional hours because it is not a requirement for students to attend the first hour on those Wednesdays. So we have to take those, that time off. I'm not sure if those other districts that you reference have that element of their schedule necessarily in the calculation and in reporting a similar manner. But those are two concrete examples that I would give. And again, taking a look at a more comprehensive, this kind of goes to something that's been a topic of conversation around instructional calendars from the Minnesota School Board Association and various organizations to create greater flexibility for districts to make adjustments accordingly that they feel best suits their needs as a district. But right now, we are under the very stringent requirements of the instructional hours.
But we do have the, we do have the, as an independent school district, we do have the authority or the ability to make changes, correct?
Correct, as long as they are within the instructional, minimal instructional hours dedicated or committed by each grade level.
Yeah, and I know I handed you the New Prague schedule. Did you take a look at how that compares? And if we would be able to go Labor Day to Memorial Day?
We did look at that. One of the things that we also learned, had affirmed, was that there is a special process you go through with MDE to gain approval for a pre-Labor Day start.
Well, they're not pre-Labor Day, though. They don't have a pre-Labor Day start. Their first day of school is, actually, let me correct that. Their first day of K5 is August 30th. You're correct. It was Jordan that started. Jordan starts their first day is, kick, kickstart to kindergarten is September 5, 6, and then September 6th and 7th for the higher grades.
And, and again, we can certainly take a look at a more comprehensive analysis of that as we bring forward a consideration of a future calendar for.
So can we look at it for this one, though?
Given the time.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Director Atkinson, members of the board, one thing that I do want to call attention to is if we do change any of our student contact day, days and reduce the amount of instructional days that we have, we will be impacting quite a bit of our employee groups that I wanted to bring forward to your attention. So if we are reducing student contact days from 172 at the secondary and 170 at the elementary, just want to make sure that's top of mind, that we would be making some adjustments to multiple different employee groups and our support staff.
Thank you. Do other board members have questions or comments regarding the calendar?
Well, I have a feedback.
I would only, my only question there is, and I didn't research it like you did, Director Atkinson, is I do like to compare ourselves to like-sized districts. And the fact that Laker time, I have found to be beneficial for my students. And I would hate to see something have to go away. And I think part of that exists because of the sheer size of our campuses. And so I would just be interested and look at similar-sized high schools and similar-sized districts. I know Jordan's a little bit smaller, and that it's, I mean, it just probably feels differently. So I would be careful if we made too many drastic changes.
Director Bernak, I appreciate what you said about Laker time. That's actually some big feedback I've heard out of the students in the high school, is that the half-days that we're now doing on Wednesdays is cutting into their Laker time. So that would be interesting to even hear from our board rep here, if he had any feedback on that. Because they're missing out on their clubs that they're going to, and they're missing out on time to meet with teachers, is what I'm hearing. So I'd love to hear your feedback as well.
Yeah, I know that's long. We've only had two of the one early run stays. But it's kind of hard because it, like Laker time, it cuts into the school day. So if you have a test or a quiz, now that day's cut short. But unlike Laker time, there's no built-in opportunity to make that up. So most teachers plan for Laker time, so they don't have a test or a quiz that day. And even if you do miss a test or a quiz, you can always come in during Laker time, make it up. But with that being said, you know, there's like the testing center that still offers opportunity to make it up. However, I know most people do prefer Laker time because the testing center doesn't always offer a true hour. So the Laker time is, I would say, an essential, at least in high school, from what everybody I've talked to.
And, and I want to reiterate that we, we will be looking at that. Again, that calculation of taking Laker time out. If we have additional Wednesdays or Thursday, for example, in that November schedule, where we could continue to have Laker time, certainly something that we would be open to. We just have to make sure to calculate just for, just for sake of reference. Last year, if you all, you all recall the winter of 22-23, where we had to utilize multiple e-learning days due to inclement weather. We were really tight, specific to our juniors and seniors with their, and most notably, our seniors, because we generally have our seniors be out earlier than the rest of their classmates at the end of the school year. So we were watching that by the hour as, as we were moving throughout that last spring.
Yeah, I really appreciate the robust discussion around this. I think there's clearly a huge domino effect. Anytime we make a decision with the calendar, kind of like Director Herman points out, and even the, the Laker time aspect, which is so valid. Moving like we did in 2016 from a seven-period day to a six-period day and the impact that has.
Point of order on that, actually. I just got clarification on that from Dr. Thomas today. I was informed that in 2011 was when we made the change, from the sixth period.
You for that clarification.
From the seventh period to the sixth period day.
And I was going off information from our study session, yeah. So thank you for that. Yeah, I didn't, yeah. I didn't have kids at the high school at that time. That said, I'm comfortable moving forward with this calendar as it is. It's something that our administration has brought forward. And I think if we wanted to have changes to it, that that's absolutely on the table as we get into a deeper conversation with our community about strategy and what we really want, and consider other potential structural changes to our day at the high school, or even learning styles and classroom experiences, so.
Chair Crosby, did you have something to add?
Thank you.
This is just one more thing. I know we're going to move forward, but one thing with like having an early release day on a Thursday at the end of the quarter is I know a lot of teachers don't like that because it prevents the ability to have like a test or something that day because they want to wrap up and end nicely on the quarter, but they don't want to short-change their students. So a lot of times they'll have that test in like a Tuesday or Wednesday. Additionally, a lot of students, I will say, when I was in elementary school, I was guilty of this too, will maybe take that day off to go on a little vacation, long weekend with their family. So doing that on a Thursday kind of loses a day of school unofficially.
Yeah, I think there, like I said, a domino effect of all these choices, right? Because when we first were talking about the, back when they were brought up, that was very much, I think, a lot of families liked the idea of it being like on a weekend, right? On a holiday weekend, especially because you get that extra half-day, which then might turn into a full day, but then you get more absences, to your point. And then the complexity, like you said, of teachers and tests and, and the ability to, to make up a test. But I know teachers are very accommodating and flexible when it comes to that, too, so.
I just have one more question about the half-days. So I know you made the change in November. Are you guys open to any discussion or changes to a different month? And the one that I see being the, kind of the most challenging for a teacher and/or a family is when you're coming back in January. Your first day of school is a Thursday, Friday. You're back Monday, Tuesday, and boom, we have another half-day, or we have a half-day. And so my question is, is I liked what you did with moving the November one. But my question is, when you're looking at vacation schedules and all that kind of stuff, would, you know, the teachers or the admin be opposed to moving a half-day to a different day? To accommodate parents and students, like you said, whether it's testing or, I mean, not taking away the half-day, but maybe moving it to a different day that would better align versus having it always on a Wednesday?
Yeah, what I, what I believe we've found from our parents specifically in the past on this topic is that the more consistent it is predictable, the first Wednesday of the month, the easier it is to plan accordingly with the schedules. So that's, that's what that's based upon, is previous feedback around this topic. Again, I would say that we certainly think for the sake of what we're talking about here with accepting, adopting a calendar, we really need the calendar to be adopted so we can move those previous pieces forward that I spoke of. If we wanted to have further conversation around additional tweaks to the calendar, I would say we could come back to the table for those tweaks. And we could certainly, around specifically early release days, for example, picking a different date. I think our, our commitment needs to be to our families that by the end of, or by the start of the new school year, we actually solidify those dates. So if we want to continue to have those conversations, we have, obviously have the structure, the start and end of the calendar, breaks, et cetera. But tweaking those dates, I think, is a reasonable consideration we could.
Thank you. I hear that. I hear what you're saying this evening. And I think going further into the year, after we have more half-days, possibly doing a secure survey on parents, teachers, and students to better understand the impact of these half-days and whether it's positive or negative might be beneficial. Because it is, it is fairly unique to our district and a new concept, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote unless others have more comments. I think my only comment would be, given the fact, like, thank you for sharing why it's being brought forward early. Or I appreciate all that. And also sharing that.
it's being brought forward early, or I appreciate all that, and also sharing that there wasn't significant input sought. And so, you know, going forward with new strategic planning and all of those things, I would, it has been something that has been brought to my attention multiple times from community members, and even in my own wonderings as a parent, right? You know, is it possible for our district to possibly look at a calendar that is on that Labor Day to Memorial? And what would that look like? Just being able to say, you know, we looked at that conversation and we, you know, sought the feedback from the community going forward. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, all in favor of approving the 24, 25 school calendar?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 6-0. Next, we have a proclamation. This week is American Education Week. It's a fun opportunity for us as board members to go make visits to the various buildings. I know I was in a few today and learned a lot about school or site improvement plans and talked a lot about math curriculum and the time and effort that it's taking staff to implement, but also the positive results that they're seeing and kind of different, totally different ways of thinking about math. So just seeing that day-to-day life of our buildings is really, what makes this work really, you know, seem easy compared to the day-to-day life of our educators. So we have a proclamation to read. Do you mind reading it, Mary?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, so proclamation recognizing American Education Week. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they'll need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, administrators or clerical staff, bus drivers or media specialists, child nutrition staff or support staff, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas our district, the community hub, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board of Education does hereby proclaim November 13th through the 17th, 2023, as the 102nd annual observation or observance of American Education Week.
Thank you, Director Franz. I think I can speak from the heart and for the board for a huge thanks, and I'm excited to spend a little more time in our buildings this week, and I know other board members are, too. We learn more every time we go in. We also want to recognize that Substitute Educator Appreciation Day is coming up on Friday, November 17th. Could I get a board director to read that proclamation? Thank you.
Sorry. Substitute Educator Staff Appreciation Day, November 17th, 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 17th, pardon, 2023 as Substitute Educator Staff Appreciation Day. On this day, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 310 licensed substitute educators and 165 non-licensed substitute educators and four nurse substitutes. Whereas substitute educators must be flexible to teach a wide variety of subjects, depending on the class they're teaching on any given day. Whereas substitute educators must adapt to different classrooms and different classes on multiple short-term periods. Whereas substitute educators are responsible for ensuring each day of instruction is productive and maintains continuity with the teacher's lesson plan. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' substitute educators for supporting the education of our students, and declares November 17th, 2023 to be Substitute Educator Appreciation Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you, Director Alstead. I'll also just comment here that it's been a tough couple of years in terms of finding substitute teachers and staffing, and so thank you to all of the wonderful people in our community who have stepped up to the plate on that. We couldn't do it without you, truly. And we will be thinking of you on Friday, November 17th. So we will move on to policy. Policy review, right now, we are looking at Policy 208, and the first reading will take place on November 27th with the second final approval on December 11th. And I'm going to hand this off, Director Blazquez is not here, he's on Policy Committee with Director Franz, but I'll hand this off for context.
Okay, so since we started the Policy Committee, and we have some potential changes in processes, more or less, to not only include the Policy Committee in the actual policy, but also to take into effect that there will be significant review at the Policy Committee, and also with the number of policies that we are reviewing the first year and the second year, what we would like to do is have the board consider a possible change from three readings and then a vote to the ability to do shorter readings, or at least one reading, knowing that the Policy Committee had already reviewed and provided input, and then also to prevent a backlog. The other changes that we made are to also eliminate, as we have done with a lot of other policies, much of the detail involved in the policies themselves by specifically mentioning individual policies and then having to go back to the board to review when, due to legislative changes or similar, changes occur that make that policy come back. So as you noticed, that we took a little bit more out of there, made it more modern, because now we do hold our policies on the internet, and you don't have to come into the district in order to review them. So those were the summary of the changes and the updates that were made. Overall, they're fairly minor, but I ask that each of you review that and be prepared to discuss at the next study session.
I have a question. So basically, you're looking at two readings because Policy Committee has already weighed in with the proposal, so it's gotten thorough review in that step. So it's taking some steps out of our board meetings, which makes sense. Are the two readings done, just for my clarification, are they done at meetings, at study sessions, and a meeting? Is there a requirement there? Because I don't read that in here.
We didn't state it on the other one either, but normally, we do the discussion at the study session, and then we agree at the study session where they go to the board. So we've never been really specific about that, but we did add in language that indicated that it's something need, it could be expedited, because quite frankly, it's a legislative change that we don't require the multiple readings, which we have already been doing. We just haven't memorialized it in policy.
Yep. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Do you, I'm sorry, do we need a motion to discuss this? I'm sorry, we're just discussing.
It is not.
Oh, we're not voting? Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So, thank you, I appreciate that, Chair Franz. My biggest concern with this is that when you look under adoption of policy and I compare this to MSBA's policy, there is some very key language that was taken out of this policy. And I know I've had concerns and I've been very vocal about being transparent with our community, and the change that I see that has been made to this policy, under adoption of Policy A, where we took out the language that "The proposal shall be distributed and public comment will be allowed at both meetings." We took that out, and I guess I'd like to understand how taking that out is being more transparent with our communities. I am under adoption of a Policy A, and you can see where the language was taken out, where it says, "By placing the item on the agenda of two school board meetings for a first and second reading." Okay, we took that out. And then we take out "The proposal shall be read and public comment will be allowed during two meetings prior to school board action." And the reason I bring this up is that several meetings ago, we had a professional board work session, a professional development session, and there was a lot of pushback about actually reviewing a policy in a professional development session. I believe it was our board operating norms policy. And we sat in that meeting and we voted on it.
That's a board policy.
I understand, this is a board policy as well.
And I can address this very, very easily. Basically, we don't put in every other policy that public comment is allowed, because it is allowed by default. We have that in our operating norms. So because public comment is allowed, no matter what, if we say it's permitted, that also means we can not permit it, and we are not legally allowed to not permit it, either at a board or a study session. Therefore, because of the way the language was and because, quite frankly, the, our board operating norms, as well as the standard, already says that people can come up and make comment on anything that's on the agenda, by only putting that statement and leaving that statement only in the Policy Committee, it made it sound like the other committees and the other policies, it wasn't allowed in. And quite frankly, it isn't our standard board operating norms. So it was an expediency, as well as to not have this policy stand out, and to use the word "permit," because we don't offer permission, we can't take it away. So that's why that language was taken out. So everyone has always had the right to comment, and we bring that up in the overall board policy, operating norms, as well as in our school board, the one that we've already reviewed, what was that, 204, 203, I believe? So that's already in there for all board meetings on every topic on the agenda, which includes policy.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, since MSBA policy has that language in there, and now we're taking it out, it feels to me, and I'm not comfortable with it, it feels to me that we are taking something away and not being transparent, because the policy is, policy is subject to interpretation, right? And so it could always come to the fact that, you know, since it's not listed here, could it be interpreted that a policy could come up where it is reviewed in a professional development session and the public does not have the ability to make comment? And that did happen. That happened this past year, where, and so I guess my question is, why are we taking it out? It just, to me, it just, it creates less transparency for our district.
Okay, so I want to take out the whole conversation of professional development and what we discussed there, because that really doesn't have anything to do with this, per se. That's a whole nother.
Well, it does. It's an example of what happened. That did happen, and we did vote on it.
The professional development session was a one-off, that was an agenda, that was actually, then it was taken out of the professional development session because we're trying to expedite things. But this is about general policy, and you don't write policies by exception unless the exception is, has to be memorialized because of a certain circumstance. That was a one-off. This is about overall policy.
Right.
And there is nothing in here that prevents anybody, but matter of fact, if we had, say, we permitted it, again, the argument is, is we are, we can then take that out and not permit it, and quite frankly, we can't do that. So there's nothing in here, in my opinion, and I believe in the initial review, that says that we're doing anything to modify transparency. We're just not making this a one-off exception statement, because we don't put it any other place, even though it can be done and should be done. So that's why that was, it was taken out for consistency.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it that way. I don't see any harm in leaving it the way it was. Personally, there's not, I have not found, and I think you were going to get back to me on this, I have not found any school district in the state that actually has a Policy Committee that's run the way our Policy Committee is run, which is why I think we're creating this backlog on policies. And then, now we're changing how we adopt a policy by changing it from three readings to two readings, which does not allow our community to provide feedback on the policies. And as you know, there are policies that are important to our community where they're going to want to hear them read three times versus two times. And so I just think that this is, I mean, policy is the core of what we do as a board. It's the core of what we do. And so by taking this out, I feel like, well, one, I feel like going from three readings to two readings reduces the transparency that we have in our district, because the policy meetings are not recorded. The policy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe I saw minutes updated on the website for the Policy Committee. I might be wrong, they might have come up in the last couple of days.
There were minutes.
So I mean, I think if we were to record the policy meetings, and we were to update the minutes, and we were doing all things like that to be transparent, I think I'd be more in support of this. But right now, we're becoming less transparent with the Policy Committee than we are with the process that we had currently.
Thank you. The irony, just because I've experienced both, right? So the irony is that creating the Policy Committee, the effort there and the intent, which we were very clear on, was to get community engagement at our Policy Committee meetings and to get representation from our community there, so it wouldn't just be a public forum situation. Now we have both, and we were very intentional in that work. It's my opinion that two readings is plenty from a public forum standpoint. Perhaps there's work we can do with the Policy Committee to help make sure the public can, you know, see whatever is needed to be seen and demanded from the public so that we are transparent. But the whole intent was to create engagement with our communities so that we could get people in our community who care a lot about the shape of our schools more involved, instead of only board members.
The other thing to point out, I just want to add that with every other thing that we've ever done, including previous readings of policies, it really is the board's discretion to send it to another study session, to send it back if there's changes in the communication, I mean, in the language or anything like that. And that has been our standard, and that is indirectly written in our rules under board operating norms, that if something even happens, that we can always vote per a quorum of the board to send it back to another study session. So all this is doing is stopping the rule that makes something go three readings and then a vote. And also, keep in mind that, given the work of the Policy Committee itself, right now, we're sitting on a massive backlog because the Policy Committee did make some changes and send some things back through that delayed, I don't know how many policies, Dr. Herman, but there are quite a few. So we had to add another committee meeting in January in order to do that. But as Chair Crosby said, one of the reasons why we took the, why we actually created the Policy Committee and added community members into it is also to increase community member direct engagement with our policies, because they are so important. They do affect so many different things. They actually are governing rules, basically, for how we govern the district. So that was the decision that was made last year, and that's why we created the Policy Committee. And quite frankly, I hope other school districts follow us.
Other board members have more comments or thoughts about language changes in this policy?
I had a couple of questions as I was reading through this. Under General Statement of Policy B, the last statement says, "The school board shall determine the effectiveness of the policies by evaluating periodic reports from the administration." I was just curious what this looks like in practice in our district. And do we, do we have these reports? What do these reports look like? And I feel like I haven't seen them, if we have them. You know, the policy work that I've engaged in as a board director so far this past year has been all at these tables, right? Study session or here. So I'm just curious what the periodic reports looks like in practice and for our district. That make sense?
I'll attempt to take a crack at that. One of the things that I would say is, I don't know the number of policies that we have, but we have quite a few. What I would say is that some of those policies get more updates and attention than others. I think, for example, we have policy I think, for example, we have policies, we've spent a significant amount of time here talking about attendance with staff and students previously. We haven't recently talked about that. We've recently talked about academics at length here in the last few sessions. We have a few policies that govern those, and some of which are going to be coming for update and review here in the coming months to the policy committee. But I think that what this spirit of this, if I may, is that we give those periodic reports, such as the world's best workforce, for example. That that's an annual report, has been required by MDE to give. And it covers a lot of different, not directly, but indirectly, policies. But I don't know that we've had specific policy updates, I would, I would say. But as it is pertinent to the particular business that we're coming forward with, we certainly would do so when we have student discipline policies that are reviewed on an annual basis. We don't necessarily give contextual reports, similar to a world's best workforce, per se. But we have had historically administrators speak to the impact as it relates to student handbooks, for example, in the summer, as we are updating those for the upcoming school year. So those would be what I would think of as the periodic reports that might come up. But I don't know that it's specific to each policy, per se.
I made another note, and I'm trying to go back, even when I was, going back to when I wrote the note. Under C, this is the note that I wrote. So C talks about policies may be proposed by a school board member, policy committee, employee, student, or citizen of the school district. Proposed policies or ideas shall be submitted to the superintendent or designee for review prior to possible placement on the policy advisory committee or school board agenda. So my note was, given policy is the responsibility of the board, is there protocol for communication to the entire board in the event of a proposal, a proposed policy or a change to policy? So a step prior to, and I wrote, a step prior to the adoption, right? So if, if there was someone in the community, it lists like an employee, a student, citizen of the school district, if they, if someone brought forward a, a proposed change or a proposed policy, would the entire board be, would it be communicated to the board in maybe email form or at a board meeting? Not saying that this happens often, but I'm just wondering, given that, you know, that is our role as the board policy, you know, how do we hear of such? Maybe, maybe those don't happen often, but I'm just curious.
It's a good question. I have that highlighted as well, so I think it's a great question.
The reason, first of all, I could just talk to what we discussed, because this is a board policy, right? This is not a policy that's reviewed by the policy committee. The first thing that, 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 the reason why the superintendent or designee is in there is because sometimes we've had this happen. Actually, people have approached me at the policy committee, or even before that. I've sent them to the, to basically Director Herman's office, and sometimes something already covers that. So it just goes from there and their person gets their question answered. But overall, if it's not a board policy, then it would need to be reviewed for illegality before it ever got brought up, because what if it wasn't legal or something like that? It would need to be reviewed for inclusion already in a policy because we've got a lot of them. How many do we have, Dr. Director Herman, like eighty, I think over a hundred now, I think?
I apologize, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's, it's not a few number. And so that would be the first kind of litmus test. And then I, and then because it's the superintendent's, if it's not a board policy where they would come to the chair and it would be brought up to the board, that sort of thing, then it would have to go through those, those processes. Because we did discuss this when we said, well, wait a minute. We don't want something coming directly from the policy committee because it needs legal review. Obviously, policy is legal. It needs to be, you know, the superintendent's actually ultimately in charge, and they delegate that role to the individual departments. If it's a food nutrition one, it goes to food nutrition, et cetera, for them to review it and make sure that it's actually doable, and then they're supposed to bring it to the board. I don't, in my time, I've only seen it happen twice, so.
I think the, the thought that came to my head was, if someone were to care enough to bring forth, whether it be a student, an employee, anyone who would bring forth a policy change or request, if the board gets to hear it as a whole, even before going through the loops, I think that would just help, because if somebody brought something forward and maybe I never even thought about it, I had no idea of such concern or said concern, you know? I think the board hearing about it, that being communicated to the board as a whole, there might, it might have more weight to, is it something that we want to have at a study session? Is it something that we want to discuss further? That, that was my, that was my kind of thought process. Because if Dr. Thomas received a policy request or a revision request, is there protocol that we all as a board hear that policy request before any type of decision moving forward is made, just so that we're aware?
We should just read E then? I mean, just like, let's look at E. What does it say? When no school board policy exists to provide guidance on a matter, the superintendent is authorized to act appropriately under the circumstances, keeping in mind the educational philosophy and financial condition of the school district. So it goes on to say what happens if there's no board policy in place.
It's at the superintendent's discretion.
It says, "Under such circumstances, the superintendent shall advise the board for the need for a policy and present a recommended policy to the board for approval." So it does go on to say what happens if something gets brought forward. I mean, there's a few redundancies in here too, right? Like, I think it's really funny that B says, "Each school board member shall have access to school district policies, and then a copy of the district policy shall be placed online." Of course, we all have access to the policies, the whole community has access to the policies. So perhaps that's a little hmm.
And I would, I would also not argue, but I would add that if a community member felt really strongly about it, there's no reason they could not contact board members. So perhaps they were getting pushed back and felt really strongly and wanted to elevate it. So there are avenues.
Right. I think just getting the board on, like, the same page, that's, I think that's my thought process is, you know, how are we, if, if such proposals came, is the board notified before going forward?
Sounds like it is.
Yeah, it does.
I think he's the gatekeeper. Then I would ask the question, I'm willing to listen to it, two readings, three readings, and that doesn't really, our work here doesn't backlog policy, really. So in trying to shake out Director Atkinson's concerns, one is that no other community has a policy community like we do. Okay, we can look into that. But your second was transparency is super important to our community, which I couldn't agree with more. And I agree with Director Crosby, or Board Chair Crosby, who said, "This is why we said policies should be looked at by more than just these, these seats." But I would love to shake out the two versus three, because it's just more time for us. And like Director France said, we can kick them back out. But if it's a hurdle that you want to go through it three times, roll up your sleeves and go through them three times. I mean, I think there's a notion that it should come to us already flushed out a little. Is that the notion?
That is, and with community input from the policy committee, that was the notion, so we weren't discussing it.
But has, have we had a ton of policies come through to us yet?
Well, we just got started with the policy community, and so we were working on our first full flush of policies. And I will add that there is something that we should pat ourselves on the back for, and that's that in, I think it was in 2018, is when we changed to be three readings and then a vote versus the way it was before, which was sometimes one reading or at the, at the board table. And then we'd have full discussions like this. But, you know, people have brought policies to the board from other districts and say, "Look what so-and-so did." And you look at the date, it's 2009, 2014. We are one of the few districts that actually makes sure that we do review policies at least once every three years. So that, that was a change that was made in 2016, and then we upped it to the three readings to make sure that we weren't rushing through them. But as everyone noted, what we did is we cut down and we said, well, we're going to do the one and two hundreds, and we're going to do three and four hundreds. And a couple of times, we've run out of time in order to keep our own commitment, and then we rushed through them just because that was the next number. And that's something that we're dealing with right now, with, with how we're going to arrange the policies in the policy committee to make sure that their annual is prioritized, new legislation is prioritized, and, and enough time is given to the more robust ones.
So I just have a couple other comments. And like, I'm not opposed to the two versus three, given the curriculum committee, but what I, what I think is lacking in this, in this policy is even in the MSBA policy, when we go to that same section, adoption of policy B, now not A, but B, the MSBA policy says, "The final action taken to adopt the proposed policy should be approved by a simple majority vote of the school board. The policy will be effective on the date stated in the motion." And then in their policy, and we do not have this, "After the two meetings at which public input was received." And we don't have that. So it's almost like putting that language in there really validates that we are going to be reading after two meetings at which public input was received. And that's, like I said, that's part of MSBA, it's not part of ours. I think not having that, having it really shows our commitment to showing that the policies will be read at two meetings in which public input was received. So I, I would be in supportive of adding that language under B.
I think, I think it's implied, but I respect what you're saying.
Yeah, I think implied can be interpreted, and I don't like implied.
If you read that again, it should say, "Public input," could have been, because you might not get any public input. For the most part, many times we go through policies.
But we want to make sure we give the public the chance.
That's kind of, that's the whole point of what I'm trying to say. So I apologize if I'm not being clear. So I think adding language to that portion that says, "After the two meetings at which public input," I mean, MSBA says was received, but it, I mean, we can, or was allowed, or was.
Yeah, where a public opportunity, where there is public.
Or during public forum, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think adding that language there, and then.
So I just want to ask something, because here's the problem with the district learning and all that kind of stuff. We don't expressly say that it's implied in the forums. So the reason why we took it out of here is because it's implied every place else. And that juxtaposed this policy against others. And so if we change them all, I mean, it's already in there, we've already got the public committee. I just want to put that forward because I'm a stickler for consistency.
I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're saying, I apologize. I mean, I really am not, I mean.
We have the ability at every board and study session for everything on the agenda for public input to be received. And when we look through the other policies with regards to other areas, we never said after input is received because we already allow that. This is the only one that was left in there, and it hasn't been changed by the MSBA in decades.
MSBA really follows the law. So my concern is that because we're taking this out, are we somehow violating the law? Because their policies follow law.
No, we, no.
Is it perhaps that, I think it is true that some school districts don't have public forum?
That is correct.
So.
So it validates and reassures our commitment to allowing that.
But maybe that's why MSBA had it in this one, because it was so important to have it. Because they have to say, "We're not going to pass the policies without public input." And maybe that's the time they opened up those. I just know that some don't have it.
That's a good point, because a lot of, well, I think some school boards don't have it in study sessions. They don't allow public forum in study sessions.
They have to in board meetings.
But in board meetings.
So maybe they were emphasizing that you can't put a policy through without input. And now you're saying you've seen it removed, I mean.
I think it just, like I said, validates our commitment.
Reiterates. We added it into the other, to the general policy, and we don't have it in anything else but the policy committee because it was language that was left over. But if we want to put it in there, again, my, I've, I've just got a pet peeve on consistency, then we will have to, or I think we should, add it verbatim in every place else that involves public input, instead of just putting it in our board operating norms in the forum and in the agenda for the board. That's just my opinion. I'm obviously open if we want to make this one unique and then not add it into the other ones, I'm fine. But my issue is just consistency, that we already have it allowed in the forum. We already have the policy committee, and we already state that public comment is allowed, so.
So here's my question though, Chair France, you are, Director France, you are taking it out of the policy when it's already in there. So wouldn't it, I, I'm, like I said.
The consistency, the consistency thing with everything else, because we already allow public comment on forums and board, and we put that in one, and we don't specifically mention it for, let's say, teaching and learning when we talk about that one. We don't mention it in, in, I can't remember all the other, finance, whatever, because we've got a finance committee now, but we don't specifically mention that when we talk about budget. So the only place we still left it in was here as a unique place because we're consistently doing it now in the policy that covers the board forum and board business meetings.
So are you saying, and maybe I'm confused because I have not been at one of the policy meetings, you allow public forum at the policy committee?
No, no, you're not hearing me. So in our forum, in our board right now.
Yes, correct.
And in the forum, we have a policy that says, "Public comment is encouraged, actually, on what's on the agenda, which includes these policies." We do not have the public input statement when we talk about curriculum and learning, when we talk about our policies on those, on finance and things like that. We don't specifically state a lot of those. This was the only place we still stated it. And again, because we already have it in our board operating norms, we can't go to this policy anyways and not permit public comment because we've already negated ourselves. So that's why it was taken out of here for consistency? So that's, that's it. If we put it back in for whatever, I don't care.
A compromise here, a solution that might work, is if, if there were, fast forward ten years, and there's a board that wants to remove open forum to, you know, and have fewer opportunities for it, what we're doing by, by maybe leaving it in here or adding some language back in, like we talked about, is just ensuring that we are valuing the opportunity for the public to give input. We're implying it anyways.
We're committed to it.
I don't, like I said, it's up to you guys.
But I'm also really comfortable with the two readings because I think it's been vetted in policy committee, it gets sent back. We get, we get repetition, 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 repetition. You know, if, if we have a problem, we can send it back. So I think two, I'm comfortable with two. I don't want to push the board any direction, but I feel like let's build consensus and move forward here.
Yeah, I'm comfortable too. I just like the commitment to the language.
That's not a problem.
I agree, and there's a chance that that's why it shows up in MSBA, because not all boards allow it. So I would rather, I'm great with two reads. I think we're comfortable pushing things back if we don't have clarification. And then I think if we state it again, public input is important to policy.
So I'm reading, because actually Edina does have a policy committee, and I'm reading theirs, and it reads, the school, this exact adoption of policy A. "The school board gives notice of proposed policy changes or adoption of new policies by placing the item on the agenda of at least two school board meetings. First, the first meeting for discussion and the second meeting for final action. The proposal, proposals will be available for the public to review and comment at both meetings prior to final school board action."
And that is consistent with MSBA?
This was last updated.
This was last updated, well, and they have a Policy Committee.
Right, so that makes sense, right, yeah.
Twenty-three.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because a lot of theirs aren't updated for years.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So that would be good to follow that language, okay.
I think we've kind of, yeah.
Do we have to push this back then?
No, 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 we, we, actually, we weren't even supposed to discuss it. It was supposed to be at the study session, and then we take it to the board, but because of, because there was some, you know, concern that we just allowed the discussion. But normally, this was just the introduction for everyone to read it, and then we discuss it at the study session, and then we go to board, that's...
We just like to talk.
Yeah.
Ahead of ourselves. It's okay, no.
Sorry, I had a couple other things, but if we want to just leave it, I can email you my stuff, and then we can take it to the study session. But I had two other comments, if you want to hear them now, or if, like I said, we push it to...
Why don't we wait till the study session sends it?
Yeah, no problem.
Director Herman? Yeah, thank you, Chair Crosby, members of the board. I just want to give out clarification, the meeting minutes are posted online, they've been posted since October 16th. It also gives the planned discussions for this year, so we are reviewing the four hundreds, five hundreds, and six hundreds. And all of our meetings are open to the public, and the dates and times and locations are listed there as well. So I just wanted to provide that clarification for the community.
Thank you, thank you, Emily. If you could add the committee members, I think that's the one piece of information that's missing from your page, and it's listed on the other pages as well.
Okay, I think, at this point, in the interest of time, and knowing that this will come forward again, right? Let's move on to the first reading of policies coming forward from the Policy Committee.
Director Herman? Is this the first reading or the second?
No, we saw these.
This is the second.
No, they must have been under review last time, but we talked about them.
So we reviewed them at our study session, the last study session.
They're still in the old format.
Emily, could you, Director Herman, could you take a look at the policies in here? Are they, I thought I, I thought we approved them and got them ready for them.
The only change that, am I on, the only, I apologize, Chair Crosby, members of the board, the only change that had universal board, well, to my understanding, was adding the child-in-law to Policy 404. So that has been added on there. The rest of the direct, immediate family member relations for in-laws is covered by the other statement that was added in relation to a family member of an employee spouse. But to Director Atkinson's call-out, the child-in-law was missing, so that was added into the edits. Otherwise, all of the policies are the same as they were presented at the work session in October.
And I just want to make a comment that we had a discussion about this. The nepotism does cover by blood and marriage, so adding that is actually just double dipping, just to make sure that it's understood, since there were questions about it. And if board members don't understand the nepotism definition and the legal definition, then it was a possibility that community members don't either. So I appreciated Director Herman, I keep on saying doctor, that's a Freudian slip. Director Herman, getting legal advice and just making sure that child-in-law would be sufficient. Kind of double duty.
I need some clarification on Policy 511, is that all right? Student fundraising? I don't know what's going on with my voice, so I'm masking up, just in case. Under the student fundraising policy, A and B, a point of clarification, so it says, "The building administrator shall be responsible for developing recommendations. Fundraising must be conducted in a manner that will not result..." Get all that, the prior written approval that's talked about in B. So does this mean that, like, our PTCs, our boosters, those groups have to get in writing what they plan on doing, or is this just for in-school fundraising?
Student fundraising.
So can you clarify what that, I know we have a definition, I just, I guess I just need some clarification on...
So the definition, if it doesn't stand on its own, then we need to make sure that it does, because student fundraising, it says here, is the activities and initiatives organized by students. The PTC is the separate organization, it is not organized by students.
It says, "Often with the support of staff, parents, and school district itself to raise funds." So I guess maybe I was caught off-guard with the, often with the support of staff and parents is in there, so maybe that's where I was. I think it's if students come forward. You know, it's not a, it's not a Wolfridge fundraiser, PTC read-a-thon, it's a, it's a student group coming forward, or a group of students even in the elementary level coming forward, saying, "We really want," oh, boy.
To raise funds for prom.
I hope I don't get quoted here, yeah. A zip line on the playground, that's what we want, we're going to raise money for that exact item. Then it's, we have a process to say to the students, "Okay, advocate for yourselves, here's the way to do it, do a written proposal, bring it back to us."
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure. Because I knew we weren't getting a permission to run the fundraisers through the PTC, so I just wanted to make sure.
Adults do whatever you want.
And to be fair, Director Olstead, during the Policy Committee, because questions like that kept coming up, the very first line of the purpose was, the purpose of this policy is to address student fundraising efforts. And in example, the PTC was brought up, and that is not covered by this policy, this is strictly student-led.
Thank you so much.
So we will be bringing these forward for approval at the next meeting, is that what we're saying? I'm just making sure I understand the process.
The next board meeting in December?
Yeah.
I think it's written on the agenda, which I thought was very helpful to have that on the agenda.
Well, we've had, we're considering these changes, so I'm trying to...
Yeah, no, it was helpful.
I agree.
Second reading on November 27th with Board, okay.
December 11th.
Board approval December 11th.
Are there other policy questions? Okay. Thanks, everyone. We'll move on to administrative reports. Superintendent Report. It's your chance.
I feel as if I had my chance in other content tonight, so I'm...
Yes, you were, yeah, okay. Other administrative reports this evening. Okay. And that leaves us with board reports. So I'll hand it off to board directors.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I had the great pleasure of attending the Masterworks concert last month that our high school did, and I, my jaw is still on the floor. It was amazing, and I just, I encourage everyone to go to those concerts, whether you have a student involved or not. It was amazing, and I can't wait for more, and band concerts, and you name it. And I was just really impressed. And Grease is coming up, the high school performance is coming up this weekend, got my tickets, I think there's still a lot of tickets available, so I know the students are just so, they've worked so hard, and the staff has worked so hard. And big congrats to the Teachers of the Year at each building, I think those are really great, and I'm glad to see those happening. I just received my Delegate Assembly Guidebook in the mail earlier this week, it's a very, very thick packet, that we will be reviewing, Director Velazquez and I go to those meetings December 1st and 2nd in Bloomington. And we get together with all of the schools, all of the delegates in the state to discuss all sorts of proposals and what we want to move forward legislatively, and very excited for it, learning, I'm just learning a ton about the process, but I'm just really excited to go advocate for our district statewide. And the last thing I want to say, coming from Teaching and Learning tonight, where we had a committee meeting right before this meeting, something that stuck out with me, we covered a wide range of topics, but the, when we're talking about our world's best workforce, and our testing, and things like that, and again, I'm not going to diminish these test results, but the one thing that came out, one of our differentiation specialists, Jen Maloney, she's with the elementary age, and she said, "How are we building human beings?" And that really stuck out with me, in terms of, how are we, how are we loving and teaching and just enveloping these kids, and not just looking at them as a test score? And I just, it really stood out with me, I wrote it down, it was just very profound for me, and so I just wanted to bring that to the table tonight. But, thank you.
And if I could piggyback off of Jess, because we're both at the direct, of the Teaching and Learning Committee, so thank you for that. I also attended the Teaching and Learning Committee, and we had a robust, a robust conversation about some MCA scores and the data there. Had some, some great, some great conversation about sage students and parent who has a student who studied with, has struggled with dyslexia, so really understanding how do we meet the individual needs of each learner is important, and it's, like I said, that was a robust conversation. We also looked at our new course proposals, which I believe, Dan, or is that coming to the board for us in December, I believe? Some real exciting, fun classes, elective classes that we'll be looking at, potentially adding to the high school schedule. I don't know if I should give a little sneak peek, but I know I like to take a lot of photos with my phone, so that's kind of an exciting one that is on the agenda list. And then, coming up for the Teaching and Learning Committee in December, we are actually going to be reviewing some policies that have to do with teaching and learning, which is a 600 series, 601.1, 603, 606, 603.1, and 611. So we will be reviewing those as a committee before they go forward to the Policy Committee for conversation, so...
Amy, would you like to go next?
I don't have any reports, thank you.
I don't have any reports, thank you.
So I also attended the Master Conference, and if we haven't mentioned it before, Director Bullion, Director Olstead, and myself had the amazing opportunity to hand out the board scholar.
That was fun.
That was an amazing experience, and to congratulate all the students who had GPAs of an amazing 3.8 or higher, and every year that number grows, so it's really quite impressive with our high school students. And then also, we kicked off the Bridges Area Learning Mentor, in which, mentorship, in which we had more board members join in, that fantastic opportunity. And just to bring up that, we had another Finance Town Hall in which several board members attended, and that went over very, very well. And previous to that, Superintendent Thomas also addressed the PTC meeting at this, in the same room, and there was a ton of questions, I'm very impressed with the community turnout for that, and it was very engaging, and it was very sobering, too, given the state of the economy and education and everything, so... But the engagement from the community was, was truly heartwarming and overwhelming as far as the questions were concerned. And then we finished the first round of the scholarship apps, and we had several girls apply for the Aspirations in Computing Scholarship App, so hopefully we will see a winner at the end of this year. And then, as part, as part of the Cybersecurity Awareness Month, I sponsored, we had 42 students this year on one day, and then another 10 students on another day, tend the Minnesota Cybersecurity Summit, in which they got to, which the students got to sit in and learn about different technology careers, and also receive several tech ed training sessions on mobile device, as well as threat intelligence in the industry. So that was a lot of fun.
Thank you. I'll just add, I was fortunate enough to go to the early Learning Advisory Council, Director Bullion couldn't be there. And so they're looking a lot at their second semester planning, we were talking about classes that, that they're introducing, and honestly, it was just, it was really fun to be with these, you know, parents of young babies that are coming new into the district that are engaging themselves and want to understand and learn more, and the energy that that brings, which was, it was just fun to be a part of that. And just as a, like, a point of information, they're partnering with CAP Agency, and, and the CAP Agency is coming on predetermined days to, with their mobile unit, to Edgewood. So, you know, for our families in need, that's a good awareness thing, because typically, I think it's been at our senior centers, but not in our public schools, so this is exciting. I also want to take a few minutes to address a hot topic in our district, which is negotiations. So I have some prepared remarks, and I'll try to stick to message here, but just know I'm speaking from the heart. Over the past year, I genuinely appreciate how our superintendent and administrative team are upholding our commitment to financial stewardship and transparency. This board supports their efforts and are appreciative of the accuracy and detail they provide to the community. It is far from misleading, it is easily available to the public and critical in understanding our future, especially financially. Today, I mentioned it earlier, a few of us were touring buildings for American Education Week, and we got to experience firsthand the efforts by our staff, in, in the words of Director Olstead, and how we are building human beings. My biggest takeaway in that experience was that we're collaborating in this district like we never have. Where we once had silos, we now have working groups coming together across functional areas and multiple levels to find creative solutions for kids. What an incredible reminder of what our staff is capable of. When it comes to negotiations, I hesitate on even saying this, but I can sit up here and defend a side, but the truth is, there is no side. It's a collaborative effort. It takes the best and brightest in our district to work intrues, to problem-solve, to find creative answers, and demonstrate to our community the value of collaboration. Our top priority remains the well-being and educational advancement of all students. We strive to support all our staff through fair compensation and honoring the important work they do each day on behalf of students and families. If anyone would...
Yeah, thank you, Chair Crosby. I just have to say that, you know, one of the reasons I ran for school board was that there was a loud cry for the lack of transparency in our district in the past, and that holds true to many aspects of our district, whether it's curriculum, finance, negotiations, and communication with our, with our community members, our stakeholders, parents, teachers themselves. It was a key foundation to my campaign, and for the past 11 months, I have heard nothing but positive feedback from our parents, our teachers, our students, and our community members on the increased transparency. I appreciate Dr. Thomas's leadership on this, and his commitment to transparency, which will only continue to build trust with our key stakeholders in our district, so thank you.
All right, well, thanks, everyone. I think we are ready to adjourn and go to...
I'm so sorry. I think it's because you shared earlier. That's my excuse.
I'm sorry, no, you're, you're good.
We appreciate whatever updates you have from Student Council and are excited to hear them.
Much obliged. So, Student Council, this Friday, we're going to start planting the Winter Spirit Week and Dance. And then, a big picture is the Minnesota Council and Honor Society has a goal this year, sponsor 10 Wishes for Make-A-Wish. So that's something that we're going to be looking at through the year, kind of doing some fundraisers, seeing how we can help out there. Then we have individual committees that we have throughout the whole year, some of those Community Service Committee, we're looking at helping out at a event sponsored by Sonya's Hope for Children on December 8th and 9th, for a Christmas backpacking event, which will be packing like bags of school supplies, toys, essentials, for some less fortunate children. Our Sunshine is going to be working, Sunshine Committee will be working with Concessions Committee for some drives and fundraisers that they want to help bring towards a nonprofit supporting casualties in the Middle East conflict. Our Development Committee is making pennants for new teachers or teachers that have gotten a new degree. If you've been in high school, you might have seen paper pennants in classrooms, we just want to make sure that all new teachers have that and can show that to their students as well. Our Communications Committee... Our Communications Committee is keeping up with sporting events and other extracurriculars, like the musicals this weekend, and making sure that those are communicated, so we can get student body participation in those events. And our special events has had a strong start to No Shave November. We've raised $700 so far. And for those who don't know, that money, whoever, whatever teacher donates the most, gets to pick where that goes. In the past years, it's been towards prostate cancer research. So that is kind of what Student Council's been up to recently.
That's commendable.
Yeah, great work, great work.
Thank you for your work in that area. Wow, it's fun to get your updates, thank you.
Much obliged.
Now we can move to adjourn. We do have future events, No School, for Thanksgiving break, November 22nd through the 24th, and we have a study session on November 27th. So we will adjourn and go to closed session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Will made.
By Director Atkinson. Can I get a second?
Second.
By Director Bullion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 6-0. Thanks, everybody. We'll take a quick break.